Right.
Right here.
Right.
Right here, right here.
Oh, was that Laura? Okay. I saw glasses there. I wasn't sure if somebody else was sitting there.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order.
Somebody's sitting here.
And um, due to the power coming back on and uploading the information that we need, um, I would like a motion to change the order of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, discussion of possible action on hearing officer. So um, this subject came up several months ago with a conversation between Dr. Tabrito and I. And many districts are moving to this. And she's gonna speak more to the um, roles and responsibilities and everything in regard to a hearing officer. What this would really be is in the event of a expulsion hearing, we would have um, a hearing officer who would actually be hearing the case and making the final call. The reason why this has been brought up with our board and with other boards is we are a very small town, right? So when something comes to the level of being an expulsion, usually you hear something going on in town, right? So we have kids in the school system. It's very possible that you might know a child or you might have prejudgment about a family. So this takes all of that kind of out. And um, then we as a board choose a hearing officer who would be the person that would be doing the mitigation. What, go ahead Laurel.
Is this, we hire this one person and this is always our representative? Or do we have to go out each time?
You don't have to go out each time. The reason why I wanted to bring this up now is because we don't have any expulsion hearings coming up in the very near future, right? So the time to pick out a hearing officer is when our minds are clear and when we can think about this in a logical order rather than it being, you know, if an expulsion hearing can come up and within two weeks, you could be sitting at a table. You can't make a good decision within, when you're in a crisis situation. So, yep.
How much does this cost?
Okay, so she's gonna go over all of this. What tonight is, is going to be going over roles and responsibilities of a hearing officer. If everybody is agreeable, then what will happen as the next step is I will ask for a vote to move it to personnel and negotiations to look at a contract and look at interviewing hearing officers. So is everybody kind of clear on why we're doing this now? The basics of a hearing officer? And we're not picking one tonight? And we're not gonna talk about the actual charges? That's gonna be up to you guys on PNN.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Alright, with all of that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Tabrito.
You do have that clause in policy already. And just to add to what Patty was indicating, because we're so small, that decision has impact. And you then become very much familiar with who was at that table. You might see the family in a grocery store. You might see them at a future event. There are all kinds of reasons to focus on the education of all the other children, right? Setting policy, making sure we have a budget, making sure we're fiscally responsible. But it is very hard when you have children in the school or neighbors that attend the school. And the likelihood of having to recuse yourself from being at that situation where you can truly be objective, it's really hard to do that. And so I would definitely agree actually meeting a person who can answer all your questions and really process how it works in other districts. And then it's not the board's responsibility to move somebody out of the school district. Your responsibility is just all the kids who are here and you have this objective person who's very expeditious, very effective. Because I've talked to a colleague who's a superintendent who highly, highly recommends this. He's very much experienced.
When is the um, normal experience? And this is for the public too, because we are recorded. And so if somebody ever asks us, they could refer back to this meeting. What, what um, are the qualifications in general of a hearing officer?
They're also an attorney.
They're also an attorney.
That's, has to be. So they know the laws. This is what, you know, they know this inside and out. And usually I'm hearing, within an hour, a situation is resolved with a family, depending on circumstances. So I would welcome the opportunity for you to ask every single question you have of someone who lives this in other districts so that you can feel comfortable about making an informed decision.
So just to your point that you said they're an attorney, um, and usually the situation would be resolved within an hour after talking to the family. So this hearing officer is also the mediator, which would happen before you get to the expulsion hearing?
Right at the expulsion hearing. If they, if the family has an attorney, they're dealing with that. But it's not dragging the district Board of Ed through mud or anything. It's, it really does create some, a safety net in that regard.
Does the district or the superintendent's office have a need to pay for a separate attorney to represent them?
Only in extenuating circumstances. So I think you should ask that very direct question based on their experience. How often does that happen?
So we would still have-
You wouldn't be a part of the decision though. It wouldn't be the Board of Ed members that would be calling to the table.
So that is where the hearing officer kind of steps in. So the board still has a board attorney.
Right.
And if the superintendent needs an attorney, the superintendent still has an attorney. The hearing officer is really our, um, our representative. Is our attorney for making that decision.
Are they educationally, educational attorneys?
Yes, yes. So that's where in personnel and negotiations, you'll be determining what goes into those contracts and then going over the qualifications and then bringing back to the full board a name of a hearing officer that you would like us to vote upon if you chose to go that route.
How many candidates would there be?
Then that's up to personnel and nego- and negotiations.
So we're gonna run this, if we agree to this, we would be running this this summer? They'd be up and running by August?
We don't have any expulsion hearings coming up and not to drag-
No, I understand that, but we want them in place before the school year starts.
Correct.
And then um, just so we understand, we don't have access to student records. You know, there's no divulging of, of information to us when we show up at these hearings. Does this hearing officer have any access to any information?
Only what's presented at that hearing.
Right. So like when you go to the hearing, remember you have a case file-
Exactly.
-that is given to you. And then that case file has all the evidence. That case file, instead of coming to us, would go to the hearing officer.
And that's all the information, yeah.
And then, that's correct.
Does this hearing officer also work for the state of Connecticut? Or would they be an independent attorney?
They're independent.
They're independent attorney. Wait, Sean has a question.
Just sort of say, what kind of, so when an instance happens, what, what information, like how would, or would we know at all that things are happening?
I, I would tell you that there was gonna be an expulsion hearing. You should at least know that and the result of it. You should at least know that, but you wouldn't be compromised at the table of having been the deciding individual.
We won't know the name or the situation of the expulsion. All we will know is that an expulsion hearing, because they have put out an agenda for it.
Right.
And that's what you would get, you know? And then the result of that again is public. And so that we would get that, that the board moved to expel a student in, you know, whatever school per the agreement. And even at that, I mean, when we even look at that, we never say who the student is or anything of that nature either.
Right.
I am remarkably uncomfortable with this. That may be nothing more than the fact that I'm sort of old school and I understand that. But with a different superintendent and a different chairperson, they could bury a lot of stuff that we'd never know about, that the board would never find out about. If the kids involved in the most recent incidents that were of such concern, for example, were to be expelled, they could, if they were skillful and they hadn't gotten out publicly the way it did, they could hide it all and we'd never know what was going on. I have a major problem with that. I also have a gut feeling that it is the responsibility of the Board of Ed. And ducking the responsibility because it's uncomfortable is not appropriate.
So-
Let me just finish.
Okay.
Recusing oneself is not a problem. If I know someone and I shouldn't be involved, I say Patty, I can't do this one. It's real simple. And people need to be expected to do that. We could, if you want, put it in policy that if there is a personal connection with, with a situation involving expulsion, that person, that board member needs to recuse if that's a concern. But I, I, I understand why. I'm also uncomfortable with the image of defending at the next budget season the fact that we had, say for example, two instances where we had three attorneys working for us. How do we defend this when we could be doing it ourselves and not paying for it?
So-
I have a hard time with that.
So let me kind of go on to a couple of things. One, there have been many instances where something has happened in one of the schools. And nowadays with social media and like the recent one, all, every single one of us would have had to recuse ourselves because of the public comments that came in and because of social media putting out kids' names. So at that point then, you are in big trouble because you now don't have anybody or a method to go through an expulsion hearing.
I, I don't know, but I agree with that. The mere fact that a kid's name is put in social media by someone else doesn't mean we have to recuse. They're two completely separate things.
I don't think so, because when you've seen social media and you're seeing different things about a student or about a case, you might have prejudgment. And so I think that it's worthy of having the personnel and negotiation kind of talk about it. I understand the lack of wanting to give up some of the power, however-
It's not a question of power. It's a question of accepting responsibility.
Okay, responsibility. However, I really have to look back at the number of times that we've had expulsion hearings and the amount of chatter that has come about on each one of those. And it is very, very typical when you have something that's gonna get to expulsion. Let's take it as something that's vandalism to a building, okay? And there's vandalism to one of the schools or something like that. I would guarantee you that someone's gonna be tapping on, Kira, you're my neighbor, you know? And I just want you to know, I know him and he has been awful since day one. Or Jackie, you're my neighbor and I wanna tell you, this child has been an angel and then the parents are, are well-known in town. So I just want you to know that. So some of those things do come in to when you have to do an expulsion hearing. We're a very small town.
Patty, if they can arrest and convict a former president of the United States and have it go through the process appropriately-
That's not what we're discussing here. We're discussing this in town.
No, let me finish. Because they're able to actually seat an objective jury, then we could do this job. I'm, I've had my, I've said my piece, I'm not gonna say more.
The only thing is, I also want to be very, very careful that you don't overlook it because of responsibility and then get turned around and the board winds up with a lawsuit because they went forward with an expulsion and the parent turns around and says, I spoke to you two and you know, and you knew me. And now we wind up in a lawsuit. So I, I think it's something we really need to kind of-
I have a question.
Yeah.
On average, how many expulsion hearings get to the point of-
The board?
In front of the board?
If they're being expelled, they come in front of the board.
But in the history, let's say like the last five years, like how many do you think there's actually been a year?
Four. I've been involved with five.
In how many years?
So I've been on the board five years.
One a year.
So we'll say an average of like upwards of two expulsion hearings a year. If we're talking like cost of that, it's to me, in the beginning-
Pretty minimal.
It sounded like there would be like all this cost. But like if, if the, the role of this expulsion officer is to just show up when, when it's actually, you know, postpone, 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 actually shows up, that's when they start being, charging for them. And I believe it was Dr. Tabrito that said it could be resolved in an average of an hour or a couple hours. A couple hours times two a year is not going to be a significant budget issue.
I would acknowledge that.
Right.
I would acknowledge that.
And don't, you always have your attorney present anyway. You've never had an expulsion hearing where you're not paying-
It was a concern of having an extra attorney.
You wouldn't have an extra attorney, right?
If we're doing that to you, the cost is not the issue and I understand that.
Just to put that.
No, you're right.
So, and in some ways, and I understand what you're saying about the responsibilities and everything. I, I look at this also kind of as a double legal protection for the board. Because if, sometimes expulsion hearings can get really, really nasty and there's hard feelings about it. Parents might wanna come back and sue. You have a hearing officer who is an attorney acting in a legal way and our attorney as well. I, I think it gives us a little bit more protection. So I mean, it's up to you if you wanna move this forward to personnel and negotiations and actually go over contractual things, more details. Talk about if you wanna interview. You don't have to go with it afterwards, but this is a thought.
Right now, I'm seeing more cons than pros and I need to see more pros than cons.
Okay.
Pros being that it's going to protect the board legally and thankfully it's, expulsion hearings are not a frequent occurrence.
Right.
But to Jim's point, when you're removing the authority of the board and it's assuming that members can be compromised.
Right.
I for one try to avoid engaging at all in social media because of that very reason. And I don't like it when people assume that I can be compromised because that is the whole point of being on the board is that we have a kind of ethics that we have, we live with integrity. The third is the added cost. So for me, I, what is more important? That we protect the board legally? Or looking at the budget, looking at what this, you know, conveys as a message to the public? And also what our role is? So I just want, I'm putting that out there for all of us to think about.
Can you go over more of like the role is for costs?
Well, it would be in place of bringing the board's attorney. Cause you always bring the board's attorney into it. You never are present without the attorney. So that would eliminate that aspect of it, so.
Well, I guess what I would say to this is that, you know, as far as the social media thing goes, I, in our most recent experience, I was very fortunate to find myself not involved in that until I reposted Teresa's Juneteenth celebrations around the state flyer, which engaged several people that I knew. So I saw posts in that regard because it brought it directly back to that experience. So although there was nothing really sort of inflammatory in there, just by that simple step, I found myself exposed to the conversation. The other piece that I've had in my own personal experience is that when Russia invaded Ukraine, there was a family in town who is from Moldova that is considered, they consider themselves Russian and were offended that the high school history teacher was teaching the students that Russia invaded Ukraine and that they needed to be teaching a more equal story on both sides. I didn't solicit this. This, this person called me at my home. So this was not something that I would typically engage in and I didn't engage. I redirected her to speak with the principal, to speak with the teacher or speak with the superintendent at the time. So even if we try not to engage with social media or there are still methods and Patty's point to the grocery store is a very good one. We see these families, we engage with these families whether we realize it or not. We are out there in this very small little community and the exposure is real. And it happens when you're not even trying. And it happened to me twice without even trying.
So Laurel, let me ask you a quick question. Are you saying that's a reason we should do a hearing officer? Or we shouldn't do a hearing officer or it's irrelevant? I'm not sure where you're, I'm not sure what you're driving at.
My point, I, I feel like a hearing officer is something that we should consider. The expulsion hearing that I sat in on, which, you know, was a few years ago, I did feel some pressure in that because the circumstances involve special needs students. And of course I immediately zoned in on defending the special needs student and that's not my role. I am there supposed to be unbiased, but I couldn't help it. I didn't weigh in that way. I tried very hard to meter myself, but at the same time, it was hard. So I think that having an unbiased, unaffiliated person who doesn't have access to the student records, doesn't know the families in town, doesn't go to the same grocery store.
You know, just for the record, they do have access to the, uh, the student records. That's part of what you bring to a expulsion.
Yeah, but it's limited to us.
They're gonna get the discipline record and they're gonna get the attendance record.
So I don't-
That's part of it.
I don't wanna get too-
I'm just trying to weigh my thing so that we can make a decision if we're gonna do it or not.
Right. I don't wanna get too, too far into this in a public meeting where it should probably go to personnel and negotiation where it is kind of hashed out a little bit more in a secondary session as far as when we start to talk about student records and everything, but-
Well, we're talking about process, not student records.
Right. I, I understand. I just wanna be careful here, just wanna be careful. So Sean, what do you think? So you, you're saying no?
I'm a no.
Okay.
I'm a no.
You're a no?
I'm a no.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes. I feel that while it's been mentioned that it protects the board, I feel like it would also protect the student in this space for an expulsion by having somebody just take in all the information that's presented as opposed to being on the board and involved in the community. So I'm a yes. I'm a yes to at least look more into it. I'm not saying yes, let's do it.
Exactly, that's, that's come back to the full board.
I'm a yes with more information.
Okay. So we're three, three. And as chair, I'm going to say I would like to move this to, I'm gonna be a yes. And I would look for a motion to have policy, I'm not policy, personnel and negotiation look into options of hearing officers, roles and responsibilities and costs associated.
Okay.
And bring back a full report to the board before entering into any-
Right.
Contracts. How's that?
Um, just one-
Personnel will do an exploratory.
Right.
I'm sorry, just one clarifying. Is, is this, they're gonna go and talk to a multiplicity of people and get some ideas about how this works? Or is this, we're gonna go look out and see who we wanna hire?
They're going to go out, look for roles and responsibilities and costs. And um, basically who does it? What have experiences been, have happened? So they may go call for hearing officers that are known in the state and say, how is this gone? Or something of that, that nature. And then kind of bring back the findings to the full board. Then we'll kind of decide from there where we wanna go.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
That's fine, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So Laurel, set up, and Karen, set up your meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, next, we are going back to-
I'll come to your table.
Fantastic.
Alright.
I wanna welcome, um, Tim Cahill from the Ray Board here to give us a Ray Board presentation. Thank you, Mr. Cahill, for your flexibility and for your patience this evening with moving things around.
No problem. I, uh, I'm sorry, my technology, I, I wasn't aware of the technology. I got here a little bit early, tried to figure it out. And of course, there was no electricity, so that really didn't help. But the presentation you have that Superintendent Tabrito sent to you earlier today, or you have in paper too, is pretty current. There's, I know I'm around education people, there's some typos in there that have been since corrected. You'll get an updated copy shortly. But I, I think I have met almost everyone here through some way, shape or form. But as mentioned, my name is Tim Cahill and I'm kind of here in two roles tonight. I manage and have managed for about 15 years, several endowments that have been gifted to the town over the last century, believe it or not. And so we'll touch on, on those, three of those. And I am also vice president of the Ray Board. So what I did is I put together a kind of a brief summary, a little bit of history on each of the endowments that we're looking at right now, a little bit of the current situation and how they contribute to the Board of Ed. So the four funds, as Chairman mentioned, the Ray Board and Ray School, the Purple Fund, which going through the budget process, you've probably seen the contribution from the Purple Fund, the Amherst Shepherd Scholarship, which is an art scholarship, and then the Isadora Sprecher Scholarship and Grant Fund. The Sprecher Fund is fairly new. Came in late during COVID from Cornell University. And they had absolutely no information and no documentation. They just said, here you go. So the only thing we had is it came in in two pieces. So Isadora and Soviet Sprecher were very philanthropic couple. He was a veterinarian from Cornell and he is one of the all-time leading philanthropists at Cornell. He founded what's now called the Flower Sprecher Library of Veterinary Medicine. It's probably the leading veterinary hot, uh, library in the world. So it's pretty interesting. There's a number of stories out there, a number of newspaper articles and things from Cornell University. And he has family that lives in town. He's actually buried at Rod Fizodick Cemetery of the street. So the gift was in two parts. One, to fund an annual scholarship to a math or science student moving forward to college. The second was in support of math and science learning in East Hattam. The fund is broken up into two pieces. Because of when the money came in, we really haven't built a committee yet that will support this. Superintendent and I have spoken about it, and we're working on putting that together. The fund is worth, right now, combined, about $330,000. And like I said, it's broken in two pieces, and they're almost identical. We did give out the scholarship the other night. The scholarship, I think, is $1,000. It should be more, and that will be part of my conversation when we get a group together. The way we build these endowments and have built the other ones that you'll see tonight is we usually take about 4% of the trailing 16 quarters. Average the balance of the account for 16 quarters, we take 4% to 4.5% of that, depending on what the prevailing interest rate is. So in this case, that would run about $8,000 a year. And that would be split between scholarships and grants to the math, science, education process. You'll see this similar exhibit to this in each one of the funds that we'll talk about. What happens is all these funds are run under what's called an investment policy statement. Okay? Rules and parameters under which I'm responsible to manage the money. Right? So we don't have all, you know, AI stocks or all treasuries. You know, we're somewhere in between. And we go through that balance. This portfolio right now is about 2/3 stock, 1/3 fixed income, which is on the conservative level of the other portfolios that we run. Go ahead.
Where does the money come into? Is that going directly into the town? Like, where do you guys break the checks out to for the portion, this, the other?
So this fund specifically has not doled out any money yet.
Okay.
Okay? The other funds, coincidentally, are written, it's written in the document that it goes to the town directly, to the treasurer.
Okay.
Okay? And so that's how they're set up. We do have them broken out by tax ID number.
Okay.
The funds I manage for the municipality are under this town tax ID number. All these funds are under the tax ID number of the Board of Ed or the Superintendent's office.
Okay.
Okay? So the next fund is the Amos Shepherd Arts Scholarship. So Amos Shepherd was a famous East Haddam person, antiquarian. One of the high school seniors several years ago wrote a nice biographical piece about him when he actually donated the money. And especially with chandeliers and English lighting. He has pieces that he sold that are in the White House and the State Department and several Washington museums. If you've been to the Historical Society Building, the barn building in the back, that big chandelier that hangs in the middle, he actually purchased and donated to the Historical Society. So it was pretty impressive. He had, what was the name of the gift shop? Something Hollow. I can't remember.
Oh, Parsnip.
Parsnip Hollow or something like that. It was where the...
The Sarath.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. So it was down across from the Goodspeed Opera House in what's the, what was the, La Vida Gustosa?
Yeah.
That space was divided in two pieces. And his antique shop was in the front. And so he was always sitting behind the cash register in a chair, and he could tell you everything about anything that was in the store, where he got it, when he got it. It was pretty interesting.
And a cool guy.
Yeah. So he was also a very famous patron of the arts. So his goal for this scholarship was to be given to a senior that is continuing in education in the arts, which... And the student is actually picked by the arts teachers in the high school each year, without application. So they choose a student that they will feel will benefit from it the most. And we've actually included, not that this is surprising, I guess, but we've actually included writing. So if somebody's going to college as a writer, that those individuals are included as well. And his goal was that, at some point, the people who received this scholarship would come back and share their talent with the community. So that's one of the things I've always, I'd like to get. Now, we've done this for about eight years. So there's some students out there who've done some pretty impressive things. And we just gave the scholarship the other night. The original gift was about $277,000. And, you know, as of the close of business on the 11th, we've got $363,000 in there. So the portfolio's grown considerably. And we've been giving out scholarships. So we've given out eight or nine scholarships so far. And those are four-year renewable. So this year, the scholarship will be $2,900 for each student, to the four students we have receiving the scholarship.
At the risk of sounding silly, I'm getting confused. Which fund are we talking about right now?
Oh, this is the Shepherd Scholarship.
The Shepherd.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And they get four students a year?
No, what happens is it's renewable for four years.
So each student is getting... Yeah, okay, all right.
So freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year, they get that.
Do they get it automatically, or do they have to reapply? How does that go?
Well, yeah, so they notify the school. We don't, I don't see any school records, but the school confirms that they're still in the same major, that they're still pursuing a degree in the arts. And then they let me know, and I send off a check.
So you take, handle that completely?
I handle all the money.
Okay.
And so what happens is I don't issue checks prior, like, a lot of the scholarships are given, handed out at graduation. The ones that I manage are contingent on the student standard school.
Okay. Is there any, anything in there about keeping up GPAs or anything of that nature? You...
I don't monitor grades. You know, once they receive it, you know what?
And that's up to the teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
You know, I don't need to be that, in the, in the, in the market that much. So the portfolio's done well. One of these days, we're gonna, we're gonna find a way to rally the people to come back and do something for us. Because we have musicians and artists and writers that we've given this scholarship to. So I think it'd be a great idea.
Because that's about, like you said, it's about eight years. So I wonder, I wonder if we could reach out to the art teacher and see...
Get the recipient names.
And get the recipient names for the passing.
Well, he should be able to.
I have them. I do have them.
Where they attend school.
I'm begging. Sarah has them all.
Yeah.
I know Amy and Sarah keep all the now.
Yeah. So maybe we can invite them back, you know?
Yeah, it'd be fun.
And give us a give here.
Yeah, I think you could privatize it. You know, my thought was you could always tie it to something else, one of the school concerts or something like that.
Yeah, sure.
I think that kind of would be the thing.
Yeah, I agree.
So the next fund is the Purple Fund. So I've been managing the Purple Fund for almost 15 years, 2009. This fund was created under Article IV of the will of Arthur J. Silman. And I put the quote in here because I like the continuity of it. But I give a bequeath to the town of East Haddam, the sum of $400,000, into trust as a fund to be known as the Alfred E. Purple Memorial Fund, the principle of which is to be permanently invested in the income from there is to be used for the maintenance and support of the East Haddam High School situated in the Village of Moody's. I just think about the forethought of that often. But Purple and Silman owned the Dry Goods Store that was in the original town of Moody's. All right? Judge Purple was the probate judge, and I think was the brain trust behind all of these things. I think he was the first person that really motivated people to do this.
Yeah.
And he was the probate judge, and he was the business partner to Mr. Silman. Upon Judge Purple's death, he left Silman over a million dollars. Mr. Silman then turned that money not only into the successful Dry Goods Store, but a company called Undine Twine, which had three factories along the Salmon River. That's what the reservoirs power.
Didn't they provide some of that line that was used in making nets for fishing?
That's exactly it.
Yeah.
Co-fish.
Yeah, yeah.
Co-fish.
So there, from the lower reservoir, you know, that you pass by the landfill or whatever, the Public Works Department, there were 13 factories from the end of that slushway to the Salmon River. And he owned three of them. And so he passed, at the time of his death, he was considered one of the wealthiest men in Middlesex County. So he set aside these funds that became the Purple Fund. So I was on the Board of Finance for eight years. And we were in a Board of Finance meeting, talking about the Board of Ed budget. And Dr. Durham, Mr. Durham was a superintendent at the time.
I remember Dr. Durham.
Yeah. I just saw him this summer, believe it or not. He was playing golf with Hot Dog.
Oh, yeah.
Hadn't seen him in years. A very nice man. And he asked me to come in and look at some statements. And I walked in, and he had on the table in the old Board of Ed building a stack of statements like this. And at the time, the fund was managed by US Trust. And there hadn't been a trade, not a single trade, not one stock, not one bond in over 10 years. We looked at 10 years of statements.
Not actively managed.
Not actively managed. So, and we were very fortunate that some of the things that they did own, they owned huge swaths of Pfizer, huge swathes of IBM, you know, some things that had done really well. But it was obviously under managed and underutilized by the town. So we sat down, and I wasn't on the committee, but I advised the committee, and we tried to move things forward. And ultimately, US Trust was bought by Merrill Lynch, who I worked for at the time, and they moved the money. They said, forget it. You're here all the time. You do it. And so that's what we did. We transferred it within the firm. So that's how I took this over. And, you know, this fund is different than a lot of funds because it really basically says, here's the money, and here, just, you know, use it for the high school. So the closing value of this fund on whatever, June 11th, was $9.5 million from that original $400,000. This, in the last four years, this portfolio has only been down three months. Okay? So it's done, it's done very well over time. If you look at the bar chart, which is next page after that.
Someone's a very good investor.
So that bar chart. So when I took, when I took this fund over in 2008, it was about $6.2 million. At the end of the year, this bar chart is used when I calculate the budget, you know, the amount I give to the budget each year, was $8.9 million. As of the close of business today, it was $9.65 million. And up to the end of the year, with our commitment for the budget this year, it's put $3.6 million into the Board of Ed budget over the last decade. That doesn't include the check that we write tomorrow, or we wrote today, for the $500,000 that we contributed to the complex. So over 10 years, this fund, just the last 10 years, this fund has contributed 4.1, more than 4.1 million dollars to the Board of Ed.
You said you just, $500,000 for what, sports complex, or?
Yeah, so when they decide, when they were putting together the, on a business case, I don't know what we would call it, Patty, when they were putting together how they were gonna fund the sports complex, they asked the Purple Fund if they would contribute. So we had a Purple Fund board meeting in conjunction with the Board of Ed, and the board voted to support that in, and $500,000. So that's what we did. You know, so that check went out. And in the process, that's been the last couple of years, we just never wrote the check. I had the money set aside in a CD. So I might, at some point, somebody's gonna ask me for this money. So I had a meeting, some of these slides are reused from a meeting that I had with Valerie and Cindy a month ago, a month and a half ago, just to get them up to speed, so that we had our communication.
So that money goes to the town now?
So it goes to the, yeah, it goes to the...
Town, to pay off the...
Goes to the treasurer. Goes to the Office of the Treasurer.
Yeah.
You know, so, but again, it's on the Board of Ed.
Tax ID.
Tax ID.
Right. Because the sports complex is a capital program, and the capital is not part of our operating budget? So therefore, it's a town fund?
I'm not...
I'm just, no, just clarifying so everybody kind of knows. Now, when you calculate this out, Tim, each year, you're taking the 4% of the last 16 months on this one.
16 quarters.
I'm sorry.
Four years, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we take four years of, and we average the quarters. And it's 4.5% of that amount.
Okay.
Okay.
So you did the additional 550, $550,000, make sure I make that clear, for the sports complex. What was last year or this upcoming year?
So the contribution this year will be $384,500. Oh, right, 384, 416. Exactly. And I will tell you this, I always do it exactly.
Is that earmarked toward anything specific, or it's just here, go play?
That's the interesting part of this, this fund, is it doesn't have the specifics that most of the other funds have. And it's just...
Well, I understand that. I did know a few guys had set something.
No, the committee has never set any further requirement. So the committee is actually stipulated, the Board of Ed is the committee. But they transfer the responsibility to an investment committee, which is the treasurer, the superintendent of schools, and a non-Board of Ed town member-at-large, selected by you guys. So historically, we've used people from the Board of Finance.
Looks like we'll be building one.
Okay. So we don't have a written policy on this as far as setting up the committee for this?
The policy, so the policy of those names, the three that I gave you, is stipulated in the trust.
Perfect.
Right, but we need to have something in our policy that reflects it too, I think.
So what I want to do is, Dr. Tobito, can you get the exact language from Tim as far as that goes? And then add that to the policy as an addendum, the one that has committees? So we don't need a whole new policy? But we have a policy and a committee? And then that would be an addendum to it? We can add that in? Okay? Did you follow me? I'm a little concerned.
Well, it wouldn't be a policy of the board, though, because it just...
It's not, and I want it in there.
It's not a committee of the Board of Ed.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, correct. But it should be, we'll figure out how to get that in there. But I want that somewhere documented.
Yeah, definitely.
So that...
I think it could be in private endowments and receiving those endowments. I think a policy like that would make sense because this is not the only fund.
Correct.
You're gonna get to the next one. And there's no, that's not really memorialized anywhere correct in board policy.
Exactly.
I think it's a different, it's more than just an investment.
Okay, so just make a note somewhere you're gonna do that.
I will, yeah, so just so you know, when I met with Cindy and Valerie, what I do is I care, I have a book that has all the history and all the documentation, copies of the original documentation. I will add the Ray School stuff to that because I do have that. And I'll get Valerie and Cindy will have a copy, and I'll get a copy from the Superintendent.
Okay. So is it stipulated that, that it is the treasurer or the director of finance?
It's the treasurer. There was no direct member. There was never a director of finance.
Currently, it's Mary Jane Malavasi, Dr. Tobito, and yourself, correct?
I am not on the committee. I am the advisor.
So you need, you still need a person at large?
And we need to name that person?
No, no. Normally, it comes out of a conversation, you know?
A community member.
A community member. And it should be a community member with financial background? Is that what you're asking for? Are you asking for somebody who just knows the town well?
Historically, you know, if you have the treasurer, you know, between the treasurer and the superintendent's knowledge of the budgeting process, that's usually...
The financial...
Usually, the person that ended up being there has had a financial background because a lot of the time, just for convenience sake, it was somebody on the Board of Finance.
Okay.
Okay, because originally, I don't know if you remember, Dave Mead was on the committee. Sue Link was on the committee. You know, so those, but those were people who were common knowledge between the superintendent and the treasurer, and they were easy to get to.
Bill DiChristofaro would be the one, too?
Bill DiChristofaro was on the committee for a while.
He was, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that, those are, you know, anybody like that, or if, you know, people, I don't know. I have no, you know, it would be anybody.
We'll discuss that.
They just don't want us, they, what I think he ultimately was looking for was somebody in between the two sides. was somebody in between the two sides.
I agree. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And, you know, so if you look at the exhibit here, that's what I was going to say. The, the pool of cash that's in the portfolio right now is about $1.2 million. That is far more than we would normally carry. But I did write those checks this week to Valerie for the $800,000. The $400,000 will be used to rebalance the portfolio after the cash moves out.
Fantastic.
There's a mathematical, it's just happened to be the date that I snapped the picture of the, of the investments.
Awesome, thank you.
So, then,
You said you wrote the check to Valerie.
Well, it goes, it's, it's stipulated in the trust that it goes, I didn't write it to Valerie, I wrote it to the town. But she's the one who does the book entries. So, she, it comes to her attention just because.
It's written out to the town.
Treasure house.
Yeah, it says in the stipulation in the document that the check would be issued to the treasurer of the town of East Haddon.
Right, okay.
Okay, perfect.
And to be honest with you, I realized I need to educate myself on the, on the differences. For so long, it was Cindy. So, she had both sides of the, you know, she had both sides of the coin.
Right.
But that's why I did the meeting too, with Valerie and Cindy at the same time. So, and they seem to be fine.
So, kind of jumping ahead, but while I'm thinking of it, is there a book in the town that has all of this, like, information? Like, what the policies of these or the stipulations are of these endowments? Like, is there a?
So, that's what I was just talking about, the document I'm putting together. There, there had been, okay? The book that I have was not unique at one point. There's been a lot of transition since then. So, I'm recreating
Oh, great.
The story for everybody. And what I am going to do is add the Ray School to it.
Fantastic.
And so, we'll have everything in place. I'll add the same details. So, I don't manage the Ray School money. Right, that's managed by Bank of America. But I can, I have all the information.
Right.
So, I'll put that in there. So, all four of these funds will be sat in one place. And you'll be able to just refer to them as necessary.
It seems to me it might be useful. If you're going to put that stuff together, we could get some of it and house some of those records at the Historical Society in town.
Yeah, so there is quite a bit, there's a great deal of information.
Right.
What's that?
All of this would be filed in the town clerk's office as well, right?
Yeah, I can check.
As far as his deeds and everything.
Well, there's quite a bit of information about the Ray family
Right.
and the, at the, in the Historical Society, as well as Purple and Selma. They were, they were very active in the community. As a matter of fact, the research I did on Purple and Selma, I pulled from the Historical Society.
Okay.
Pictures, you know, I had, the book has pictures there shopping. I just thought it was really quite unbelievable. And as you, you know, as Board of Ed members, this is something that actually goes on. This is, this is happening a lot right now in our world because there's a huge generational wealth transfer going on in the world right now. They say it's four and a half trillion dollars because of the, because of the tax laws about moving wealth to children. You know, moving your estate tax exemptions, which could change in 2025. So, money moving around. So, you, you know, you never know what you're going to hear. And it's kind of an interesting idea. You know, that, you know, to think that, you know, I don't mean to be cavalier about it, but $200,000, $400,000 can be $10 million. And over the course of its life, it's getting tens of millions of dollars to the Board of Ed. So, you know, just an interesting legacy conversation. Happy in that. So, the Ray School, the Ray School Board, the Ray School Corporation, it's got a number of names because of the way it was established. So, Frederick Ray passed in 1926. And that's when this whole process started. As a memorial to his parents, he, I'm going to read this. This is actually a clip out of the actual will. "As a memorial to my father and mother, James S. Ray and Mary B. Ray, I desire to found in the said town of East Haddon an educational institution offering courses of instruction similar to those of a high school grade in which, however, vocational instruction and manual training and the useful arts shall be emphasized. The institution to be primarily for the benefit of inhabitants of said town and the town of Haddon. It is my intention that this educational advantage shall be applied insofar as blah blah." So, that goes on. But that's an actual clip from the picture of, the picture of the will that I have. And, but his focus was explicit. And he provided an accumulated $2.2 million that included everything from teachers, supplies, buildings, up into and including a dormitory. He was willing to build a dormitory to bring people in to pick up these skills. His, whatever it is, great, 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 great granddaughter, Erin Ray Heisey, is the president of the Ray Board, which is a really excellent legacy, and she's great at it. And so, the committee, the Ray Board Committee, we probably have seen around, but there are seven of us right now. The Ray Board has been totally reconfigured in the last six years. Six years ago, a gentleman by the name of Peter Dean called me. I sat on Board of Finance with him. He asked me to join the Ray Board. And when I walked in there on my first day, I was 26 years behind the next closest new person on the Ray Board. So, what had happened was the Ray Board was three people or four people from town and six people from U.S. Trust. Okay? That is what we nowadays call a conflict of interest. The bank was, they were the ruling members of the board and they managed all the money. So, they theoretically could have voted them to pay themselves 56% of the, you know, whatever. So, that, that ended. And we've rebuilt the board since then. So, the only person that's still on the board from that point is Jimmy Curtin. And he is our, you know, our historian. And he keeps us from, straying from the path too far. But excellent guy, was on the board. So, he was on the board for, has been on the board for over 20 years. And I think he's dying to get off. But,
He can't.
We know, wish, I step on his foot every time. I don't want to leave me being really nothing. But, so myself, Ann Comer, who is a CPA, she is our treasurer, and she is fantastic. And went through, and went through the books. And Terry at the Board of Ed does all our, writes all our checks and does all that work for us. But she sat down, spent a ton of time with Ann. And Ann got every i dot and every t crossed, and it's pretty impressive.
Sounds like Ann.
Yeah, it is, no doubt her. And Erin came in. Fern Trembling. And Kevin Staley, Jr., yeah.
Junior.
Yeah, and Kevin Staley, and Jimmy, and myself. So, that's where we are now.
And who's the other gentleman?
Who am I missing?
You're missing our Boag teacher.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. No, the industrial arts teacher.
Industrial arts teacher, help us out, Kelly.
Who retired?
Who retired a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, he was on the dinner.
Hello, Staley. Oh, this is all.
I can't, I know who you mean, I can't think of his name either.
I'll look it up, I'll think of it in a second.
Yep.
I could see him like he's sitting.
Exactly.
I can't believe it.
Was he just at graduation, we were?
Yes, he was.
Yeah, okay, what's his name?
Oh, my God, I feel terrible.
I do too.
I'll come up with it in a second.
We'll come back. Three o'clock in the morning, people.
Yeah, yeah. Bruce, Bruce Freeman.
Bruce Freeman, there we go. Sorry, Bruce.
That was terrible, I'm so sorry. Anyhow, so that's where it started.
Memorialized on tape, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure Bruce is going to listen to the meeting. So, that original $2 million has gone. It built the Ray Wing on the, on this building that we took down. Took down to build this when it was restructured. It's bought countless amounts of equipment. It contributes to teacher salaries. It does granting, it does all kinds of things. It contributes to graduation. The fund is broken down into two pieces once again. There is what they call the trust under will, which is just a lazy name for the original fund. That is $10.4 million. Your, your number is old, it took me till today to get the number from the, from the bank. That, that fund is $10.38 million. And then the grant fund, which is what we use to augment our contribution to the general Board of Ed budget that stipulated to salaries and things like that, is $2.38 million, just shy of $2.4 million. That we use for additional expenses.
And do you do the same calculations?
It's an identical calculation. Four and a half percent from the large fund. And we, based on what opportunity we have for giving grants, what kind of programs we see, what kind of requests we get from teachers, will modify the other fund to suit what we're trying to do. There is no stipulation in the investment policy on the grant fund about how much we can pull out of it. So, we can do whatever we see fit. But we try to, we've never moved outside between three and a half percent and five percent.
Does the committee, does the Ray Board Committee have a set of bylaws that they stay within?
Yes.
That we should be aware of?
So, yeah, so what happens is they have investment policy statements that they work under. They have guidelines, you know, from the will. And we go through a complete budgeting process, just like you do.
Right.
So, it's, it's far more detailed than what the Purple Fund does.
Yep.
And I'll include all that stuff, whatever the parameters that we work under. And we modify, we did, the, it's no longer U.S. Trust, it's called Bank of America Private Wealth. They fidget with the, with the investment policy every year for whatever crazy reason. But you'll, you'll have a current, a current one, and it'll change once a year.
How does the budget process work? Do you, does the Ray Board Committee start the budget process? Or is the budget process started by the liaison at the high school working with the committee? How is that working?
Starts with the teachers.
Okay.
Okay, so what happens is they put together what they feel they're going to need for the expenses that we cover, which,
Okay.
I don't know if, certainly I don't think it's all of them, but it's a considerable amount. And, you know, all the animal feed, all the, the industrial supplies that they use to make, you know, all the different projects and things like that. And it all comes in, we actually, our budget format looks exactly like yours. And it's just different, I think it's different ledgers or whatever. I call them ledgers, but whatever they, whatever they call them, different accounts. And so, we actually literally sit and go through, we do two meetings. We do one with this, the education staff, and then we do our own meeting. And we go through and they, it changed a lot when it was no longer the banking control because we, a lot of us have a financial background. So, we were going through it line by line and learning a lot about, you know, where the money goes. And, you know, do we, is money better spent here or there? And, you know, and we have the, you know, kind of the bandwidth to do that. Something that Ann and I have done all our career. So, you know, that, the, the point on what that budget is going to, you know, the pencil's a lot sharper than it was. So, we're trying to make sure that money goes to the best places that augment, you know, what the teachers are trying to do.
So, in your bylaws, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but this is kind of important, a lot of this. In your bylaws, not the will, but in your bylaws, do you stipulate in there that there must be a liaison teacher that is?
No.
Okay, so there's no stipulation there?
No, I don't, I, not to the best of my recollection. I would have to go back and read them.
I'm just curious if there, if somewhere it's documented that, you know,
The liaison has always played a significant role. I will tell you that. But I came in when Bruce Freeman, who's now on the board, was the liaison.
And Bruce had been there for like 20 years. So, where my concern is, is like, you know, Bruce was there for so, so long.
Yeah.
And I would hope that our other teachers would be there that long, but you can't ever guarantee it.
Yeah, so what we've done, the process that we've come to is we sit and the teachers are invited to every meeting. So, we do our meetings in two parts. We do kind of an open meeting with all the, you know,
Yep.
the principal and all the teachers. Whoever's available is welcome to come, ask, talk about programs. Because we always start about, our question is what's going on? What are you doing? What's happening? And what's going, you know, what's coming up? And so, we have a very open conversation. During the budget process, all, all the educators are there.
Yep.
And we ask directly.
Okay.
What benefit are we getting from this money? Right, is there a benefit to this? Is there something that's missing? You know, and, you know, we, we put those questions out there to see. I have no axe to grind, you know, whatever. So, we're trying to make a very open conversation so that we can make sure that we, we're using the money where it benefits the programs. The ones that benefits the students, we get the programs, who cares? But that benefits the students. And, you know, having, you know, having as many people from outside, you know, different, different roles, different walks of life, you know, I think it's kind of opened the conversation quite a bit as to, you know, what can we do? What can we, what can we find outside and bring inside? And, you know, we have, you have your board liaisons.
Right.
Has been at the meetings, and we've talked quite a bit about it. We're doing, so we're doing a lot of work with the work-study program. We fund the work-study program, about $16,000 a year into work-study. We just opened that up. We added some funds this year because the library lost their interns, they lost the funding for their interns. But, you know, after some conversation, quite a great conversation, it seemed like a good program. So, we were able to add some funds to that. So, we have two interns from the high school working at the libraries full time over the summer. And, you know, we're, we're looking, that's one of the areas that we're looking at really carefully. Is how do we find opportunities for kids to work, to get out and do something?
Work, actually, and, and just so that the board is aware. So, the teachers in that department, they collaborate together. And they kind of come up with the schedule. So, one year, it might be the culinary that will say, I need a new dishwasher this year. And then the next year, it might be something in Mrs. Carberry's or Mrs. Peace's room. And they, they kind of work together as a team. That team is very, very cohesive. And they kind of have their own.
Yeah, we have, we really have a capital budget cycle, just like you have. Why, I know they have it for the town, I presume you have it in here, stuff gets fixed. Same kind of thing, yeah.
Is there any concern, and this is kind of out of Tim's purview, but where I see the line item that says field trips specifically, we don't have money in our budget for field trips. So, when we have a conversation with the Ray Wing about the money that's allocated to them and field trips come up, this specialty department is getting field trips where other departments are not getting field trips? Is that the truth? Is this how this works?
You fund field trips in the budget.
This year, we cut all the field trips.
No, we cut new ones. We cut new ones that we're going in there.
We funded a lot of field trips.
We have a lot of field trips.
I was very concerned about that. Where one group of kids is getting field trips.
Well, even, even so, if it's kind of dictated in a, in a will, yes.
The, so, I mean, and I will say this. A lot of the field trips, what happens is a lot of the, a lot of these classes do field study work.
Right.
So, you know,
It's different than a going on a field trip.
It's different than, you know, dinosaur show park or where, you know.
But the word field trip.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, so the, like, so the other thing that we did this year is we, we replaced the bus. If you've seen the Ag bus, Boag bus, the, the other one was forever old. And it was, it needed to be replaced. And it was, it needed to be replaced. We're putting a lot of, because we also maintain, all the, we, in our budget is the maintenance for most of the equipment in that wing, which includes all the industrial arts equipment and all that stuff. And the bus was one of those things. And, um, so, uh, we looked at it, uh, we went out, got a bid for a new bus, bought, bought the new bus, which is a whole story in its own right, but it's done. So we have the bus and they were able to use it quite a bit this year, which was great. Um, they did a bunch of different things. They were able to get out into the community more, which is great. So that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to do. So one of the things we did this year, and you see it underlined in there, we were having a conversation about the, the building that they're putting together for the industrial arts and Boag program up to high school. And we really felt we wanted to make, we wanted to put a Ray Board stamp on that. So what we did is we pulled fifty thousand dollars, we put together a grant fund so that as they perfect that facility, that they have access, you know, they have access through our grant process to say, hey, what, this is the, you know, this is, this machine's gonna make a difference, or this, whatever, this technology is gonna make a difference. And, uh, you know, so I think that, that money's gonna go a long way in that process. But we were able to do that and without having to jump around a lot, a bunch of things. And that's the, to best of my knowledge, that's the first time that the Ray Board has done something like that in many, many years. So that's the kind of stuff we're looking to do is you say, hey, we don't want to take money out of our regular grant process. Let's continue to do that, which, by the way, the grant process is open to all the departments. So this year we, we did, we ran some grants for, uh, the science department. They had some, you know, kind of interesting equipment that they were looking for about velocity and acceleration and whatever. And a couple of years ago, we bought them these like rockets that, that, that were tied to some technology. And this adds on to that process. And we've done, we did speakers and equipment from the music department and stuff like that. So the grant process, we open up to, you know, whatever opportunities are, are out there.
This is awesome.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a really, it's a, it's a really amazing thing. It's, you know, and it's a very current conversation, um, you know, in a lot of, in a lot of places. And, uh, so it's, it's interesting that, uh, it's an interesting time to be there. The, the board is really, um, pretty dynamic, good group of people, a lot of energy for what they're trying to do. And, um, yeah, so, you know, that's, that's what they do. So, yeah, so this year's contribution in overall was about four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So about half of that goes to salaries and then a bunch of it's broken down into other stuff. But, uh, like three hundred and seventy thousand dollars is to, goes to the regular budget process. And then another fifty thousand dollars to the, to the grant program. We do give some scholarships and things like that. I think the scholarships will increase next year.
So, do those checks go to the town as well? How is all of that managed? Because that's been a question for a while.
Well, and it's changed, so.
Yeah, good.
So what happened with, the Ray Board has its own tax ID number. We are individually audited. We are totally, it's actually called the Ray School Corporation, if you look it up in tax records, okay? So it is its own entity. Terry Hungerford runs our checking account for us. Dr. DeBrito, Ann Colmer. We have four possible signatories, right?
Cindy.
Cindy and Erin, right?
Yes.
Erin, our fourth, so, which, after the bus thing, she said she'll never sign another check in her life. So anyhow, um, so we have signatories, the money goes into that account and Terry distributes it, okay? But it's done that way because we have our own thing. The other thing that we do is we tie everything out. So if you tell me you're gonna spend a hundred dollars on herbal food, there's a PO for a hundred dollars in herbal food. So it's just like, it, you know, I think it's probably less steps than the big school budget process, but we.
So there's some accountability built in, is what you're saying?
Absolutely, and if, if the expense doesn't get made, the money doesn't, the money doesn't go into the pool. It stays with us. So some of the things that we've been able to do over the last few years were money that didn't get spent in other ways. So thick field trips that didn't happen, magazine subscriptions, memberships and things. So that was the big deal. When, when Ann came in, that's one of the processes that we went through and tied all that stuff out because there was money in that checking account and we were like, hey.
Why is that there?
You know, why is there a hundred and forty thousand dollars? That's how we bought the bus.
Right.
The bus was eighty-eight thousand dollars. That was money that was left over from programs or things that never got bought. So we, we are on it. So we know exactly the, the grant, uh, that we're doing for the new shop, about half of that is coming from excess money in the checking account.
Beautiful. All right, so that clears up.
Yeah, and what happened is at some point, at some point, the checking account was opened up under the school tax ID and we kind of, so we were paying for an audit. So we were paying for an audit and they never said the tax ID doesn't match. Ten thousand dollars. I said, that's the last time.
Please tell me you got someone else to do the audit.
Yeah, we did. And, and they got, they didn't get, uh, you know, a friend of the bank, they got me and Ann. Like, okay, here's how much we're gonna pay you, because we could do this ourselves. This is not, it's a checking.
This is not rocket science, right?
Yeah, so we, we ultimately got everybody in place, you know, the big song and dance to go sign the checkbook thing and all that. So we've got all that squared away.
So everything now is squared and there's a, a really well-run system in place of checks balances that the Ray Board is happy with, that the school system is happy with as well, correct?
So that's something that I think needs to increase, is the knowledge, because it seems to be like an island over here.
Right.
And then I get the check request after the fact, right? So that, we're gonna, I think in policy, can create that structure internally. Has nothing to do with the Ray School Corporation, but just so that the big picture for the district makes sense and that the Board of Ed is also aware.
Yeah.
The other thing recently we talked about was sending a delegation to the National Convention, which I think is really important for students and some adults.
National Convention of.
FFA.
Yeah.
Good.
Yes.
I, yeah, especially, I'm sure Speaker will be going, right?
That's right, that's right, because she's the state winner, so then she moves on to compete. But to send a delegation as opposed to just that one, it would add and revive, I think especially if we have officers.
Right.
We want to revive the program, right?
Couldn't agree more, yeah.
So that, that was great to hear.
I was in the FFA in nineteen eighty-something.
Did you go to a national convention?
No, we had some local ones. Starting to say how old I am. On their Ray Wing, yeah, we check it out.
I need to tell you that the leadership qualities definitely have come through.
There we go.
The, um, yeah, so we just need to get a grant together. Maybe you and I can talk, draft something up for the board. Like I said, it's really supportive, especially when we have that little weirdo thing that we weren't gonna be part of the FFA and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
That whole crazy.
That whole rumor.
It was weird.
Yeah, very strange.
It'd be good to, you know, close it out by, uh, with great guns.
It caused a little firestorm and it was misinformation or somebody was backtracking.
But I think it was.
Ultimately, that, yeah, ultimately we found out it was, it was bad channel, but, but it's fine, but.
And we've never missed a payment. We've always been members of the FFA, so.
Now going forward, one of the things we did is we, we, in our permanent budget, we put the FFA dues forever. So it'll be in our budget every year.
Makes sense.
Online item, yeah. It's not enough money to even really think about, but I think, you know, to, to expand that. Well, it's, you know, it'll be on the calendar, right, between Ann and Terry.
And if we could, um, incorporate the Ray Board budget into our budget.
Yeah, for knowledge, right?
To knowledge, but not to vote upon.
Right.
So I think that has to be a separate thing.
Well, I think one of the things I can probably do too is I can send you, what, what I do is I generate for the other funds. I generate everything that, you know, I generate a number on this, on January fifth. It's on my calendar and I generate what the contribution from the, the Purple Fund, the Palmer Fund, the Town Fund, but all that. And it goes to Cindy and Valerie. I can add that, I think by then the Ray Board has done too. We usually know what it is and so we can chip that number to you at that time, so you know what the number is. You know, but normally what happens is we count up the number and we haven't, we haven't seen our budget, like, the budget hasn't come to us yet, so we don't really, you know, just because the money's available doesn't mean we need to spend it. So we just, you know, so that's one of the hedges that they, you know, that I think is probably out there, right, after we know our numbers, so we can get sent.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, yeah, you know, you know, so.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's what I put together for you tonight. If you have questions, um, the last page on there has my, I think has my company email and, uh, that's my, my phone number that rings through here twenty-four hours a day. So if you have any questions, anything.
Can I ask a random question?
What's that?
Can I ask a random question?
You can ask every question you want.
So in the Ray Will, it also says the town of Haddam, do they still?
They do not. I, I, to be honest with you, I almost chopped it off because it freaks me out a little bit every time I read it. I don't know why it was in there. I'm sure.
It has something to do with the history of where the land was in the twenties.
Yeah.
Because East Haddam was divided and I only know this from pulling up all of my deeds back from nineteen eighteen on, is, you know.
And you can research it, because I had the same thing, so that's just some original historical language, right?
Yeah, I mean, that document was actually drafted in like nineteen eighteen or nineteen twenty-two or something like that, so.
It's a little bit different.
Yeah, because it was, nothing else mentions Haddam except that line.
Wow.
So I think they, they probably tacked it on to make sure that, you know.
Just cross them off.
Little Susie and Johnny from Haddam neck could participate or whatever.
At that point, yeah, things were very good.
Yeah.
Tim, I want to thank you so much from, um, on behalf of this board, but on behalf of East Haddam, the amount of work and volunteerism that you do in managing these. And I, I say this not just as a board member, but as a, as a resident, because I've been going into these budget meetings since nineteen seventy-five and, and every year you're bringing your presentation, you're thorough. These accounts are just spectacular. And I really think that we, the town owes you a huge thank you for the amount of time, dedication and just.
Talent.
The talent that you, that you bring to this.
I appreciate it. It's, I enjoy it. It's, it's a nice way to connect my community and my job, right? So it's, uh, I, I've always enjoyed it and it's, uh, it's good, you know, whatever, it's, it's fun, I appreciate it.
You can never be tired.
Oh, that's true. Thank you for coming today.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for having me. I know this is an extra night out.
No, this was so important.
People have plenty of nights out.
Oh, no, we really appreciate it. We appreciate everything you do and, and, um, thank you so much too for including us in the Ray Board decisions and at those meetings. I'm, I'm excited that we have eager board members who want to participate. We want to see the whole program grow. I think, I, I think combined wise, we're really gonna do some great stuff.
I appreciate it, yeah. I, I know the conversation, one of the conversations we're having on the board is trying to get a board member at each board of ed meeting.
Oh, wonderful.
We're trying to look at work schedules and stuff, because a lot of people are traveling and busy, so. Uh, we're around and if anything comes up where we can, you know, we can be of advantage or if like, you know, whatever, our support or something, just shoot, shoot me an email. Somebody, somebody will get there and we'll get it out to the board. Like I said, the board is really responsible.
Would the member, would the member come and give a report?
It's, I mean, it's up to you. Um, you know, I, you know, most of the time, once our budget is done, it's just in place. But if you had any questions or you want to know about the budget, you know, I think certainly one of our goals would be, after we get our budget done, is to make sure that there's a conversation so that we, you know, so we're all on the same on. We know we don't, we know we don't, you know, we're not changing policy or changing curriculum, is the word I'm looking for. Anything like that, but we want to be supportive of whatever goals you're putting forward to.
Sure. So do you want to go into that, and we can work this out more in detail, um, to one of our budget presentations? So we do like the high school, the elementary school, the middle school, and then we'll do the Ray, you know, Ray Board. And we could do that, and usually that's about an hour or so, you know.
I was gonna say, Patty, maybe not just the Ray Board, maybe the, the donation funds, because there's more. You got the Ray Board, you got the Purple Board.
Yeah, I would do them all.
Okay.
Do them in one shot, yeah.
Do them all in one shot and I think that would be an endowment, um, thing, so.
Yeah, tack it on to high school.
We'll have to remember that Kelly too for when we go into the budget calendar for next year.
Yeah.
That would be wonderful.
So, and, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll figure out what, what you need.
And for the record, um, since I'm charged with leading policy and instruction around here, if you have things that you think need to be addressed, um, yes, you can have an influence. We owe you at least giving you a good listen, if nothing more.
Oh, I appreciate, yeah, the board would be glad to hear that. You know, I, I think everybody's trying to, like I said, we, we just want to make sure we're not, you know, going in one direction.
Correct, and that's why I kind of want to have that book, that master book, and also incorporate a policy that will say you will follow the Board of Education, will follow the, the terms of each of these endowments and, you know, and such and so forth.
Yes, and we'll get the, we'll get the, um, Purple Fund up and running pretty quickly. And then I think probably the, the smart thing to do is, as we talked about, is tie the Sprecher Fund, make that the same committee.
Yeah, okay, that's nice.
So you don't have two things going on that involve the high school.
I remember the Sprechers.
Yeah, yeah, so.
There wasn't that one, no.
That's been around. I mean, they, they gave away.
They sure did.
Tens of millions of dollars, it's out of control.
I remember that.
They, yeah, very interesting character, um, so anyhow. Anything else?
No, thank you so much.
Everybody wants to talk about soccer?
Yeah, we love it.
You've been following, you've been following?
Uh, well, no, I, yeah, it's coaching. Coach, well, I stopped playing after I had my knee replaced two years ago, but.
Oh, I did not know that.
Yeah, that was, I didn't want to, but I really didn't have a choice. But anyhow, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I hope you have power when you go home.
I, I do. I was able to dive into the shower before I came here, which was good, so.
I give our best to Lisa, too.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Bug out.
Great. Right, um, Board of Education annual self-review, did everybody bring their notes with them?
Yep.
Yes.
I did not, did you bring everything for Board Self-Review?
We did have printout.
Yeah, I brought it, but I didn't fill it out because I didn't want to.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
I actually, I appreciate it. I was gonna say, I keep getting my stuff on Google Doc and.
I should be able to. I think it's soccer in town.
It was just like, uh, World Cup playing twenty-six.
I know.
Boston, Hartford, New Jersey, Dallas, San Antonio.
So we, we're missing. Taya and Sean. I hate to table it, but I feel that.
So we've been talking.
This is a board conversation and having us not have two of our members here.
It's a problem.
So, you guys feel with that? Do you want to tell Kelly that's bothering?
I'm gonna start her right now that she doesn't need to go again.
All right, so the board review is tabled.
Annual review, correct. Fine, Tim.
Still moved.
Okay.
I'll be right back, I gotta hit the button quick.
Okay. And, um.
Laurel and Laurel.
Laurel.
That we table at Terry's side of the.
All in favor?
Aye. Does that include rules and responsibilities as well?
Yes, because that's underneath there.
Yeah, so the whole of B is tabled.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect.
Laurel, Terry.
Oh, Terry, I'm sorry.
I'm distracting you.
All right, um, next is the.
Uh, Lindy was here tonight, we didn't say.
We want to give that information to Kelly when she comes back.
Yeah. Um, acceptance of the following resignation, um, Lindy Camming, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Sadly, a second.
And she was here tonight, we can say something to her.
Any further discussion?
That the large, uh, large role was filled, she's been very good, doesn't it? For the elementary kids.
And she's been through the whole thing. I mean, she started when the computer room was like a hundred monitors and that.
She was like the, yeah, the tech support for there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, next is discussion on hiring school psychologists.
Yes, Amanda Dodd, lovely. So typically you don't really have a discussion, you kind of just accept it under consent agenda, so I don't know why it has discussion.
I think our original agenda did not have.
Right, so I don't know why it changed.
Yeah, I think it's.
Well, I have your original agenda here and I agree on all of it.
The posted one is correct.
The posted one is correct.
Yep.
So that's what you mean by the original agenda.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So, yeah, no worries. So you'll approve that hiring.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, we have, um, a personnel matter that we are going to discuss in executive session. And then, yep, yep, hold on. And the evaluation of the superintendent. Can I have a motion to go into executive session and invite the superintendent in?
Still moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'm gonna call a five-minute recess and then we will.